Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Spooner. Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Reese. Mr. Segi.
We will now have our recently elected board members come forward to have the Honorable Judge Naomi Showers Doyle administer the oath of office. We'll gather it there in front of the, the elector.
Hm? Well, I can't go. Well, I can't go. Shoot.
Why would you go?
Because I'm in Poland.[869.39][870.82](laughing)
That I will execute the duty of the office of the Bowman IFC Board of Trustees of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Ms. Avery, would you join us up here, please? We're going to have a recognition for Stacy Lewis during recognitions, but let me say before he leaves the dais, thank you so much, Stacy. You have been a wonderful board member.[1038.29][1038.32](applause) Do we have a new sign for Ms. Avery? Ms. Antoine, could we have another roll call for the record?
Ms. Hickman.
Here.
Ms. Spooner. Ms. Avery.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Reese. Mr. Segi.
The board is now going into closed session to discuss agenda items posted on the closed session agenda as authorized by the Open Meetings Act under sections 551.071 Attorney Consultation, 551.072, and 551.074 Personnel of the Texas Government Code. The date is Thursday, May 15th, and the time is 5:14.
Dr. Frank, I understand today is somewhat special for you. It's Dr. Frank's birthday. We're so glad your birthday present is getting to be with us up here.
I've been telling everyone that I get to have a party at the board meeting, so thank you guys so much. I try to keep that a secret and never happens. Good evening, Madam President and Trustees. Over the past several months, the Budget Committee has worked diligently and thoughtfully to develop a balanced and sustainable budget for the 25-26 fiscal year. This important work reflects our continued commitment to fiscal responsibility while supporting the priorities and needs of our community and our district. This evening, Ms. Hernandez will provide an update on where we currently stand in the budgeting process, and she will also outline the committee's next steps as we move closer to finalizing our proposed budget. Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Dr. Frank. And welcome to, this is, I think, number two, or is it, is it number two, second budget workshop? And to our newest board member, I'm gonna try to help you to understand a lot of different things tonight, and feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, or you want to sit down and get your own class. We can do that, but tonight's presentation is hopefully going to provide some transparency, some context, and some clarity around our processes, and some of the financial challenges that we have, and some opportunities that we're facing, and how your input as a board plays a critical role in shaping what our priorities are. And we're going to share some highlights of our revenue forecasts, and there's also going to be time for questions and discussion, and we value your feedback, and we believe that this collaborative process helps build us a stronger and more informed community. So let's get started. We always start out all of our presentations with the vision and mission, and if you'll recite it with me.
In collaboration with the entire community, we will create an inclusive environment of academic excellence that supports the diverse needs of all learners.
And the mission.
We will inspire and prepare all students for lifelong success by providing an exemplary education in a safe learning environment.
Now, we also like to share our board outcome goals, and these board outcome goals will expire at the end of this year, and we're currently working on the new board outcome goals. And this is a picture that depicts our budget process, and our goal with that budgeting process is to plan a budget that helps the district meet those board outcome goals. And we also plan the process to produce a balanced and sustained budget, as Dr. Frank mentioned. And so, it's really an ongoing process, and that's why it's a circle with just different spots, because we're always working on either this year's budget or projecting what we're working on for next year, and there's a lot of planning that goes on. And we began the planning for our 25-26 budget in the fall. And we're almost to the end. This is going to be the last meeting that we have to share some information, and then we will have our public hearing in June where the board will actually adopt the budget for the 2025-26 school year. When we are preparing our budgets, and we're given allocations, per pupil allocations to our campuses, departments receive allocations as well, they tie their budgets to our budget priorities, and they're actually going into our team system and tying all of these budget priorities and stating it in there how much they're giving to support each of the priorities. So, where are we right now? We are continuing to look at our staffing and our current vacancies. We're still looking at our revenue and our expenditures that have recurring revenues and costs, and then we're keeping on that legislature. The legislature is meeting right now, and there's a lot of bills out there that we're keeping eyes on, but so far, we do not have any updates from them. We're projecting a 3% raise right now for all employees with some adjustments for some of the high-needs areas. TASB presented information last month about our salaries, and thanks to the passage of our VADER, we are within 96% of our peers that were shown, and so that is a good thing for us, and the board was gracious to give us that go-ahead to go out there for that VADER, and we were able to bring our salaries up. Dr. Allen shared this a couple of months ago, like what happened to the VADER money. We committed it all to recurring expenditures, so each year, these funds are in the budget because we gave raises, those continue because we don't take back what we gave our employees, and we've got safety and security measures that are in there, and of course, our facility improvements. So, this is a breakdown of our different sources of revenue. We have local funds. The biggest portion are property taxes. We are actually... Sorry. I actually have my phone on silent, but you know, with kids, you put it to where they can still get you, and I forget to turn it off, sorry. We have interest revenue, that's another big one for local revenues, and we're actually projecting a decrease because interest rates have dropped some. And then our state revenue, we know we're not going to get 1,882 funds of 1.3 million. And then federal funds, we will not be able to receive indirect costs because our ESAR funds are gone, and we actually had $2.3 million budgeted for that, and so we're going to decrease that. And then, of course, our SHARs revenue, the government is not going to be reimbursing us for some of those expenditures, but overall, we're looking at a $3 million decrease from last year. So when you look at the $3 million decrease of revenue, but you want to give a raise, so you're going to increase your expenditures by approximately $3 million, so when you add them together, we had to look for $6 million to be able to sustain it, okay? We're not getting any new revenue because we have the same amount of kids with the same amount of times coming to school. So this picture, we used this during our VADER presentation, and I really liked it. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Evans needs you to stop for a second.
Oh, certainly.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms., can you go back to that last slide?
Certainly.
Can you tell us, kind of define the indirect cost in the SHARs? Kind of tell us what exactly is that, and what's impacted with those two funds?
So, I sure can. Our indirect cost, when we receive federal funds, and I actually have a slide tonight that's going to show you how many, how much we receive in federal dollars. So, when we look at, each year, we file with TEA our indirect cost rate. There's a calculation that is done. Stacy does it for us, and then she submits it to TEA, and then we're assigned a... Direct cost? A restricted and a non-restricted. So, a restricted indirect cost rate is very small. And then your non-restricted is about, I think we got 15%, but our restricted is like 5%. So, each time we have federal dollars, the district can recoup like 5% of that for the handling of the money. It's kind of like, it's a revenue in our general fund, but we charge it to the federal grant. With ESAR, we were actually able to use our restricted rate. So if we spent $10 million of ESAR funds, the district got 1.5 million. That's why that's so large, is because we were able to charge that unrestricted indirect cost rate, and it gave us extra money for operations, okay? And our SHARs is our school health-related, what's the R? School health, it's revenues from our special service kids that when we spend expenditures on certain kids, they bill Medicaid for some of those, and then we're reimbursed for extra expenditures. So this is actually federal dollars as well, okay?
Is it lower because we have fewer kids, or is it a government?
Health and human services actually reduce the amount that any district is able to recoup for health services or related services.
Yes.
So it's not just here, it's everywhere.
And we actually have a consultant that helps us to process all of the things because there, it's very detailed stuff that they have to submit, and so we use a consultant, and we pay them a percentage of the funds that we receive for our SHARs. In total, I think we get about 1.4 million in SHARs revenue.
Correct.
And then for Medicaid, it's 600,000?
It was about 6, 620, I think.
Yeah. And then our BABS, our Build America bonds, we get rebates back on the bonds that were issued years ago, so that money is flowing into the general fund as well.
Ms. Hernandez, two years ago, we were hit with a property tax disagreement with the state over the level of our taxing. Are we okay on that now?
We did receive our preliminary local values that the state comptrollers issued it just about a, maybe a month ago, and we did receive local values, and everyone in the area did this time. But you can tell from your, your tax bills or your notifications from the appraisal district that a lot of the values have increased, and that's due to the value that the appraisal district appraises your property at is what you could sell it for. What's it, what's, what could you get for it? It's supposed to be what your value, what your property is worth. And so a lot of them have increased because there's a lot of people paying outrageous amounts for homes these days, and so that's causing the uptick in those property values. And we don't set those values. They're done by the Jefferson Central Appraisal District, and we contract with them to do so, just as all the other taxing entities do within our county. Any other questions? Our Chapter 313 funds, our one-time funds, that's what we like to call them, one-time funds, that were projected to get right about the same amount this next year as what we did this year. However, we did have notification by one of the entities that they are canceling the project, and we were actually gonna go into the value limitation period next year, and we were gonna receive some extra funds, but we won't now because they have canceled the project. And these are only for the period of that agreement, too. So these will expire when those agreements expire, and we won't have any other extra one-time funds because they sunsetted the actual Chapter 313 avenue for, or businesses to come to Texas and make agreements so that they could have some kind of abatement on their school taxes, because we're not like the county and the city. We can't offer incentives for people to come into the area. It's prohibited by law.
Is the foreign trade zone, the foreign trade zone that the city declined to pass a couple of weeks ago?
Not this one. This one has to do with the, the products that are in a certain area around the plants. So whatever product is in that zone at that time, they pay us 40% of what they would if they were paying taxes on it. So we figure out the, what the value is of that product that's in the trade zone. Sometimes they ship out a lot at the end of the year so that they're not having to pay, because if it's a foreign trade zone, typically, it's tax-free for that entity, but we have the agreements with ExxonMobil, and they actually make a payment to us for that at 40%. So, in August or September, depending on when we bring it, the board will adopt two different tax rates. And this is just a slide, we showed this during the VADER, and I really liked it because it shows 80 cents of our tax rate is going towards just operations, the payment of our teachers, and the maintenance on our buildings, and then 16 cents is going to pay debt of what we owe on the previous bond issues. And it just is a really good picture. Two different buckets, but when you get your tax bill from the tax office, you're gonna see one tax rate, because they add those two together, but we're actually collecting two different taxes. Okay? Any questions? We probably will see a decrease possibly in the MNO rate slightly, because when our property values do go up, there is tax compression by the state, depending on how much the state's property overall has grown. So contrary to cities and counties, when the property values go up, we don't get more money. The state just takes back what, they're just gonna reduce that by what our, our taxes go up, our state aid goes down, because unless we get new kids, we don't get to keep it. This is our enrollment history, so we have had a slight decline. So we're projecting, in our budget, 16,119 students, and hopefully, they will come, or come back. And the board, just to note, just to let, or a reminder, and for our newbie, you're gonna adopt three budgets: the general fund, the child nutrition fund, and the debt service fund. So, oh, this slide just really messed up. I forgot to check that one, Ryan, oh, well. You know, when you're dealing in Google slides, and then you bring it into PowerPoint, it sometimes messes up, but this was gonna be a really good slide for you to see. If it hadn't messed up, because, I mean, if you look, Title I Part A, the district receives That's what we did for this year. Now, we haven't received our planning estimates for next year. If we did, we just did today, so I didn't have time to update the slide. And Title II, we get $1 million. Title III, $235,000. Title IV, $618,000. IDAB formula, that's for our special needs children, $4,439,000. IDAB preschool, these are special needs preschool kids, $133,000. So when you look at this, we have 275 positions that are funded from some of these grants. In addition to the general fund, where we have the majority of our staff, so that's a lot of extra people funded through the federal government's allocations to the district. Are there any questions about that? I just thought it would've been really good, it would've been really nice had that slide looked better, but it's, it's just a big eye-opener to see that the district does receive these, and, and there's requirements associated with these funds, just like we have requirements with our state money as well. Okay?
This does not include head, our Head Start or Nutrition?
Actually, Head Start's down. It, it was there.
So what's up there does not include Head Start?
2 million? The, the 26...
275 million.
The 275 does include the positions in child nutrition and Head Start, but Head Start is on there. How much did we get in Head Start? I forgot, 2 million? This little? 4 million? 4 million dollars. So there's another 4 million dollars. So we kind of went blank.
Got a question, Ms. Hickman.
Go ahead.
Why are we talking about...
Hey, he fixed it, look! That looks so much better, thank you, Ryan.
We're talking about two of my favorites, math and money. How much does that accumulate total?
Well, I mean, if...
Come on, I know your math is, I'm in school with you.
So if you, if you're looking right here, it's probably, say, 8, 9, 13, plus another 17, 18, so 30 million?
All right.
If you add in child nutrition, because child nutrition is about 12 million dollar program. We, we get reimbursed about a million and something every month for feeding the children. And then, lastly, these are some bills that we've been keeping our eyes on. House Bill 2 was based off school funding, and they're looking at putting 7.6 billion dollars into the school funding formula. But the Senate, they got another idea, and they're talking about teacher pay increases. And then, there's some increases talked about in special ed, and then, of course, early education. And then there's the Senate bill for school safety, increasing that school safety allotment. And we've already placed a lot of money towards school safety, so hopefully, that'll help us to be able to meet some other needs, because we've, we've been consistently, you know, trying to make sure that we've got our armed security guards at all of our campuses. And we won't be able to know until they vote it both through in the House and it goes to the governor. So, the only thing that I think that went to the governor is vouchers. Priorities, just, does anyone have any questions? As we learn things, we will update the board as quickly as we can to let you know, we can balance the budget right now, but it'll be taking some things out that we have grown very fond of, like maybe the one-time stipend. We don't want to take that out because we love to give it. We love to help everyone to have a good Christmas. And if they put money into education, if they increase that basic allotment, there's gonna be strings attached. You're gonna have to give certain types of raises and a certain percentage to teachers, and a certain amount will go to, they're talking, the, the more experienced teachers will receive more money than your lower-paid, and you've got to do certain percentages. We're hearing all kinds of stuff right now. But we will make sure that we comply with whatever rules that they tell us to.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
We are ready for our regular board meeting. Please stand and join us for the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flag.
Tonight's color guard is presented by the Beaumont United High School Navy Junior ROTC. It is commanded by Cadet Ethan Prevost, Cadet Andre Simmons, Cadet Guadalupe Delgado, and Cadet Micah Riles, under the direction of Gunnery Sergeant Michael Triplet, United States Marine Corps retired. The pledges will be led by Vincent Middle School 8th Grader Kylie Drew. He's a member of the FFA program, and he shows a duck for competition.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and, indivisible.
We will now have our recognitions. Ms. Jackie Simeon, Director of Community and Media Relations.
Good evening, President Hickman, Board Trustees, Dr. Frank, and Dr. Allen's absence, and audience members. Our first honoree of the evening has made history in Beaumont ISD. Ernestine Hunter is the district's first Brace Equip Program graduate. Brace, Beaumont ISD's... Brace, Beaumont ISD's Responsive Academy to Certified Educators, or Grow Our Own Program, was established in 2023 in partnership with Beaumont ISD, Capturing Kids' Hearts, TeachWorthy, and Indiana Wesleyan University. The program serves current employees of Beaumont who are pursuing bachelor's degrees and teacher certification, as well as graduating Beaumont ISD high school seniors who have earned their associate's degrees while in high school and are working to become educators. The accelerated program has little to no cost for the participants as they work to become certified teachers. Ernestine graduated from Indiana Wesleyan University last month and is teaching social studies at Vincent Middle School. All Brace participants must agree to work for BISD as certified teachers for two years, so we are happy to have her as part of our family through 2027. Please join me in congratulating Ernestine Hunter.
First of all, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to pursue my calling, because this is not just a career or a job, it is a calling. I've been working for BISD since 2004, and I left and then came right back home to BISD in 2017. So, my cohort family, all of us, you know, we're just so happy to have this opportunity. Thank y'all so much.
classes. Join me in applauding... Join me in applauding Beaumont United Valedictorian Jamie Garrett, who will attend Lamar University this fall, where she earned the eight thousand dollar per year Cardinal Elite Scholarship and an additional two thousand dollars per year Cardinal Elite Housing Scholarship. She plans to intern with ExxonMobil while pursuing a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering. After graduation, Jamie hopes to explore international STEM opportunities and expand her impact on a global scale. Salutatorian Valeria Velazquez will attend Lamar University to seek a Bachelor of Science in Biology and plans to continue her education to pursue a career in pharmacy. Westbrook Valedictorian Crystal Liu has chosen to attend Stanford University to pursue a Bachelor of Science in Materials, Science, and Engineering. She aspires to become a professor focused on sustainable and advanced materials research and to one day launch her own startup based on her discoveries. Salutatorian Matthew Kyrikos was unable to join us tonight. Matthew will attend Rice University in Houston, where he plans to pursue a Bachelor of Science in Bioengineering. Prior commitments have also kept Beaumont Early College High School Valedictorian Alonso Rodriguez and Salutatorian Gerardo Gonzalez from being here tonight. Alonso plans to attend Lamar University, where he has been awarded the prestigious forty thousand dollar Cardinal Elite Scholarship. There, he will pursue a Bachelor of Science in Biology with aspirations of becoming a dentist. Gerardo has also been awarded the forty thousand dollar Cardinal Elite Scholarship and was accepted into the Lamar Promise Program. Gerardo will attend Lamar University and major in mechanical engineering. We now invite Jamie, Valeria, and Crystal to the podium.
Good evening. I would like to thank you all for recognizing my outstanding academic performance. This recognition reinforces how the support from this tight-knit community proves that when you're doing right, it's impossible to fail. Since I'm staying local for college, I look forward to our continued collaboration and your continued support. Thank you.
Good evening. It's truly an honor to be here today as Westbrook's valedictorian. I've been with Beaumont ISD since Regina Howe, then I went to Marshall Middle School, and then I went to Westbrook High School, so Beaumont ISD really has been all part of my life since I was in kindergarten. And I'm truly thankful for all the support, opportunities, the people, the teachers I've had. And there's definitely a lot of people I want to thank here today for this honor. So first, I want to thank God, because he has strengthened me and supported me on this, and guided me on this journey. And then I want to thank my parents for being such a strong support system. My parents really have integrated this mindset of really loving education, really loving learning. And I don't think I would be here today without them, without such strong support, not just for my education, but for me as well. And then I want to thank my brother, he's not here today, he's in thousands of miles up in New York, but he will be here for my graduation. But he is truly my inspiration, he stood here four years before me, right here today, he was also valedictorian. He definitely put a lot of pressure on me to be here today, because he's my brother, and I, there's a lot of pressure to live up to the sibling. So, thank you for being my inspiration, and he'll see this, hopefully. And, he's also my best friend, so not only is he an inspiration to me, but also my best friend. And then I want to thank all of my teachers, some of whom are here tonight, which was something pleasant to see. They've not only helped me in the classroom, but some teachers, like some of them tonight, have really helped me outside the classroom, have taken the time outside the classroom to help my pursuits. Ms. Muse is right here tonight, she has helped me outside the classroom with violin on multiple occasions for free, on the middle, in the early morning, on the weekend, and there's so much support, and I'm so happy for that from my teachers. And then I want to thank Principal Phillips and all the other staff, he's here right now. Principal Phillips has been my Marshall Middle School principal as well, and I promise, every single year that he has been principal, I feel like the school has gotten better. I know freshman year was wild, but right now, everything is really, really chill. And, thank you, Mr. Phillips, because I think you're the reason why Westbrook is so chill now. And then, and then finally, thank you to all the Board members here tonight, and just everyone in general. The Board members, you have made education possible all twelve years, and you have been instrumental into guiding me where I am today. And, yes, thank you so much, everyone.
Well, Crystal's brother has proved that positive peer pressure can work. So we thank him tonight, also. Well, finally, tonight, it's so hard to say goodbye to Board Vice President and District Two Trustee Stacy Lewis Jr.
Hello, citizens of Beaumont, Texas, my name is Stacy Lewis Jr., and I'm running for BISD trustee, District Two. I'm Stacy Lewis Jr., and I'm fighting for our community.
Vice President Lewis chose not to run for reelection, so tonight, we thank him for fighting for our community and for the service he has provided to us for the last four years. And as you can see, he is departing tonight with the winning haircut that won him his seat on the Board. Mr. Lewis, if you would please come forward, please, let, please join me in congratulating him. And his award reads, "In recognition and appreciation of your distinguished service as a Board member, from May 1st, 2021 to May 3rd, 2025, your contributions have strengthened our foundation and future."
Thank you.
All right, I have my easter speech, so that way I make sure I stay on task of exactly what I want to say, but- I don't even want to cry. Dot, dot, wherever you are, I miss you, all right? So for the last four years, me and her sat right next to each other, so, showed up my mind. It's tough. I don't want to cry, okay? So let me say on my easter speech, now, first and foremost, I'm happy, I'm proud, you're going to do great. Greatness is stored, and then also, it's another cool thing right here, right? I mean, we just changed out the crimson for a little red, that's it, that's all we did, all right? So that same seat is going to be fine, okay? But first and foremost, I want to thank God, want to thank God, and want to thank my family. You know, without both of those in my, in my life, then none of this could possibly be possible for, for any of us, okay? Want to thank God for the opportunity. And I want to let you guys know that success is not success without a successor. I want to thank the pioneers who laid the foundation, those who built the cornerstone of what it truly means to be a community servant and a public servant. When I ran for the seat, as you guys can see in the video, I went with the moniker, the slogan, "Fighting for Our Communities", and I meant that. And I worked to be intentional in doing just that. So, that's how, that's how, so, it was seeing that little boy, you know, I'm that little boy right now. Tears on my cheeks, and the ones on your shirt, and trying to make sure that you take care of his needs. And for some of you, it's little girls. And so, my community, my community is this community. It's a community that's made of educators, our students, and our staff members. And it has been the highest privilege and the honor to serve you guys, truly, thank you. So I want to say, I'm proud to pass you the baton, and I only hope that I've made this school district community proud, and that I've done the work with justice and integrity. So today, I say farewell as a trustee, but not as a servant. In the presence of my family, all of you guys, I'm announcing my attempt to run for justice of the peace in the upcoming midterm elections. So my fight don't stop here, it don't stop here, it only gets, it only goes higher. I'm going to work hand in hand with you guys here during my election season, and then after I win the seat, to make sure that Beaumont is heard around the state of Texas. Because I personally, I believe this, all right? That I'm an advocate of Beaumont ISD, and I'm an advocate of the city, and especially for our youth. And Beaumont cannot afford to keep losing its young to crime and violence. And I want you guys to understand that jobs and education are the only way out. I'm committed to be on a part of the solution, and I thank you guys for this honor, this recognition, truly. Sorry to sit up here and embarrass myself in here crying, but needless to say, I thank every last one of you guys. I have coaches, I have teachers, I have, at some point, coworkers, all in, in the congregation right now. And I thank you guys for the hand that y'all put on me, thank you.
We close with invitations to our three high school graduations. ECHS kicks things off on Friday of next week at the Westbrook Performing Arts Center. Then on the last Saturday of this month, we will celebrate Westbrook and Beaumont United commencement exercises at the Montane Center. Get more information on those and other events in Beaumont ISD by visiting our social media platforms, subscribing to our YouTube channel, and exploring our newly enhanced website, bmtisd.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simeon. Next, we will hear the Assistant Superintendent's report, and we will then have public comments. Stacy, get away without his sign.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, and BISD community. Tonight, I will present the Superintendent's Report on behalf of our phenomenal leader, Dr. Shannon Allen. We have already recited the vision and the mission, I won't make you do it again. But in front of you, you see our core beliefs. Our vision and mission are grounded on these six core beliefs, and tonight's presentation will address Core Belief One, "All Children Can and Will Learn", and Core Belief Five, "We Will Work Collaboratively With Our Families and Community Partners". The presentation tonight is short, I have three quick updates for you on registration, summer to success, and then graduation. So we kicked off our registration efforts on April 26th. You can see our registration event here with lots and lots of pictures, it was well-attended. I want to say we registered about five hundred students. They didn't have to come to register, because you can register online. I want to thank our campuses, because we are continuing our efforts. And so, just this week, we had two additional registration events. One was held at Westbrook, "Don't Strike Out, Register Today", and all of the feeder schools from Westbrook participated in this registration event. So thank you, principals, for working together. We were able to, again, help and assist families with registration. Yesterday, we had a registration event at Beaumont United, Registration Raceway. And again, you can see, we had families to come out, and we had our staff assisting parents with registration. I want to remind our parents, it is important for you to get your students registered for the 2526 school year. We have currently, and this was 9:00 AM today, so I'm hoping more parents got on, two thousand five hundred nine students registered. So when you think about, we have sixteen thousand returning students, it's only about seventeen percent. So, continuing to push registration. New students, three hundred eighteen, we're excited about that. So those are new students to the district, they could be pre-K, or they could just be moving into Beaumont and coming to our schools. As a reminder, because I've heard this asked several times, well, if my student is already enrolled, why do I need to register them? They're already enrolled, they're on the campus, they know we're coming back. Have some bullet points for parents, and if you could help pass this information to parents. Early registration lets the campus to know you're returning for the next school year. We are planning right now for the 2526 school year. It also ensures that we have your most accurate information, your contact information, and health information. Schools use the registration numbers to plan class sizes, we look at it to assign homeroom classes, hire teachers, allocate resources. And then registered students will have the ability to come to Running Start to meet the teacher events and have schedules ready for them. And parents, it saves you time, and it prevents the child- And parents, it saves you time, and it prevents the child from missing important events. We have activities and events throughout the summer. You do not want to miss out on information about your students' Running Start events, Meet the Teacher events. We have several campuses that have new leaders that will be pushing out information where you can come in and meet the new leader. So we want to make sure that parents take care of registration. We will continue to support our parents. Again, I will say, you do not have to come to a campus to register. You can go online to our website, click on our registration link, and complete all of your registration online. But if you need help, campuses will continue to support parents throughout the month of May. In the summer, from June 4th through the 27th, Monday through Thursday, we will have someone at the Annex from 8:00 to 4:00 PM to help parents with registration. And I'm also working with our Student Services Department. We want to offer some extended hours here at the Administration Building during the month of June. So again, if you need help regis- with registration, we are here to support you. The next update is about our Summer to Success website. So excited about this. Ms. Angelo and her team always does a phenomenal job of taking the information, not only from our district, but also from the city and putting it in a one-stop shop for parents. So the website is up and running. If you go to www.bmtisd.com/summer, you will see information on registering or registration for summer school. This flyer, which is also on the page, shows us where we are having summer school this summer. We have feeding sites where students can come in if they're under the age of 18 to come in and get a free meal. We want to make sure that our parents and community are aware of our feeding sites. Also, we are pushing reading even in the summer. So we have our summer cooldown literacy events that will be held at the Annex. Opportunity for students to come in, take AR tests, activities for students, and then we also have STEM camp. And, of course, we want our kids to have something to do, and a lot of them, guess what they like? They like going to open gym. So we have our open gym at Beaumont United, Westbrook, and then also at Peach McArthur, Jones Clark, Marshall and Vincent. And then if you're interested in your students taking swim lessons, you can find out information about swim. Alright, last update. I will tell you, I had the pleasure of attending LIT graduation today. And seeing our students walk across the stage, getting associate's degrees and certifications, even before they graduated from high school, was just something that really touched my heart. You just saw Ms. Semien share our graduation date, so I'm looking forward to early college high school next Friday. Okay, we will be at the Westbrook Performing Arts Center. And then the following Saturday, we will graduate students from Westbrook and Beaumont United. So right now, we have 1,051 graduates. 464 are graduating with honors, that's about 44% of our graduates. Forty-eight graduated today with associate's degrees. 126 with Level 1 certifications. And our students have received over 15 million in scholarships. So we encourage you to come out and support our students at graduation. We are looking forward to those ceremonies. Any questions?
For the students for the summer for eating? You said under 18? It's 18 or under?
Zero to 18.
Gotcha, make sure.
Yes, let me clarify, zero to 18. So if you're 18, you can participate in the summer feeding program. Thank you for making sure I clarify that. Alright, if there are no other questions, I am also going to present our Cabinet Report. And the Cabinet Report today is going to review board outcome goals for 2025 through 2030. And I will tell you that these are proposed goals, they have not been approved by the board yet. We actually held a board workshop on May 7th, and it was led by Dr. Duncan Klusman. The purpose of the workshop was to define the strategic goals that will guide our district's work for the next five years. And we specifically looked at goals in early literacy, early mathematics, college career military readiness, and perception, and A and B rated schools. So before you, you have our Task Force Groups and Leads. They have been leading the charge of working when their particular area, and you can see those groups on the left side, teaching, learning, and leading, parent and community partnership, climate and culture, talent strategy, and college career and military readiness. So we receive feedback, and we appreciate the feedback, feedback is a gift. And we know that the board's expectation is for us to establish ambitious and inspiring goals in literacy and math. Aiming for more aspirational targets in college career military readiness that align with the district's commitment to make sure that our high school campuses can achieve an A rating. Looking at quantitative and qualitative data in measuring the perception goal. And then overall, looking at targets that reflect high expectations and demonstrate confidence in students' potential. I hope I summed that up correctly, Board. So, what you see in front of you is 25%. And I'll talk about this, and I, this, one of the things, if Dr. Prudhomme is here, she's gonna know I called her the other day cause I woke up with a dream after our meeting on Monday, cause we immediately came back. And we met, and we talked about the expectations. We made sure we were looking at data. We made sure that we were focused on goals that our community would see that we were raising the bar and looking for progress. And, but at the same time, we're attainable for where our students currently are and where we need them to be. So 25% increase by 2030 in reading, math, and CCMR. What does that look like? Our first proposed goal for early literacy is that the percent of third grade students that score meets grade level or above on Star Reading will increase from 27% to 52% by June 2030. Second goal, the percent of third grade students that score meets grade level or above on Star Math will increase from 21% to 46% by June 2030. For Goal 3, the percentage of graduates that meet the CC, the criteria for CCMR will increase from 65% to 90% by August 2030. And when looking at our perception goal, we did get their approval to use this goal that did not have a baseline or a target, but to make sure that we were looking at performance objectives that would be able to measure perception. So we, we stuck with Beaumont ISD will create, improve its perception with all stakeholders by ensuring all students are safe, supported, and able to develop self-management skills as measured by surveys and other data reports. We will concentrate here on community perception, community and student perception with surveys, but also looking at discipline data, decreasing the number of referrals that we have, and looking at safety measures. Are we implementing the safety measures mandated by the state and where we want to be by 2030? And then for Goal 5, we want to increase the percentage of our students in A and B rated schools from 15% to 50% by August 2030. So again, we know if we achieve 1, 2, and 3, it will make sure we achieve 4 and also 5.
Mr. Reese?
You told me something about, I think it's Goal 2, that we are at above the state average.
When we look at our reading, or you want to look at math. When we look at where we are, and I do want to say that the baseline will probably change. But we do want to increase by 25% from wherever our baseline is. Currently, we're using our data from 2024 STAR because our scores have not come in for 2025. But when we look at our data for third grade STAR, and if we just look at the region, 32% is where the region is at meets. And you don't have this in front of you, but I can provide it for you. And then for the state, 41% at meets, and that is for math. When we look at reading. For the region, 39% at meets, and then 49% for the state. Yes. So we know we are performing below the region and the state, but our goal is to make sure that we are setting targets, yearly targets, where we're increasing. Once the goals are approved, we will come back as a team and then talk about the yearly targets. So that means in 2026, where do we want to be? So if the end goal is 52% for reading, where do I want students to be at the end of 2026, 2027, all the way to 2030? Any other questions? Or really comments and feedback, because we have a meeting scheduled Monday where we're going to take your feedback again. If you tell us to go back to the drawing board, we will do just that. Our Task Force Leads are here, they're writing down notes, and I will write them down as you give us feedback, or any comments, or tell us to move forward. If we are allowed to move forward, when we meet, we will set targets, and we will also begin to work on performance objectives. Those are going to be the strategies that we implement. This is, this is going to be part of our broader strategic plan, the plan that's gonna drive the work of the district.
I, I think we've agreed, we, we need to move forward on them because it's unsatisfactory if we leave the goals low. We need to be pushing towards something higher for our children. Who's gonna be satisfied with a 27%? That 27% of your students are reading effectively? That's not satisfactory. And as a district, we need to be pushing forward to raise the level of expectation from our children. I wouldn't want my kid reading, or students reading at 27%. Is that satisfactory to you all? Any of y'all got children in the district? Would you be okay? If your child is reading 27%? It's not acceptable. So we're pushing the ball down, down the field. Let's get on board, buckle up, and let's push the district forward. That's why we changed the numbers.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, just one quick question here. We, we're gonna look at for each one of these by year, how much we want to raise it, say, from 27 to 52. You guys gonna come back to us with that?
Yes, sir. If you tell us to move forward, that the goals are okay, then the next step will be, we will set targets. We didn't want to set targets if the end target was not approved.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the things we agreed with the other night was, we wanted something that was easy to understand by our community. And I think the math goal is appropriate, it is more than double what we, where we are now. I think the reading goal is not, I think it needs to be at least 54 so that it is double what it was last year. Cause as Mr. Segi said, nobody is happy with last year's score.
Alright, I have noted that we will come back, and there goes my 25% graphic, but. We definitely want to make sure that, because we know Board, you will be the face of these goals. Not just, not just the, the teachers and the principals. And we know that you have to communicate the goals, and we want to meet your expectations.
We have to sell it to the community.
And I'm going to make a comment that's probably not gonna be popular with Ms. Hernandez, however. If we want kids to read better, we have to provide for them to read. And I know we have the program on their computers that they can read. But there's nothing like holding a book, and even more importantly, snuggling with your mom or your dad or your big sister to read that book. So I want us to be very clear about being able to hire, if not librarians, although I would love to see us meet the state average, and the expectations of the state for certified librarians in our elementary schools. But at least librarians who are allowed to be librarians in the classrooms so that they're not taking care of everything else in the world, so that they can check out books, so that they can help children find books, and make reading a true priority, because unless everybody is making reading a priority, if kids are not setting goals to improve their reading, if they are not aware that it is a big deal for all of us, it won't be a big deal for them.
Yes, and this is targeted to Ms. Hernandez. In listening to President Hickman, I would like for you and your team to navigate into funding for early childhood partnerships. We partner with World of Color and all that, we've asked several times, and then I guess it's on the back burner. But when we talk about literacy and kindergarten up, Ms. Little is here, Beeman Head Start and all of that, we have an avenue. We want to, of course, hold our parents accountable. But if we have young parents that cannot do it, we have to do it. And that's where the daycares and the partnerships come in. That is a necessity. So I'm employing you again, Ms. Hernandez, to look into whatever we have navigating here and there to help us make that a dream come true. Because Ms. Hickman has helped ask, and I have asked several times, so thank you. Not, not, not cracking the whip, but we, we need some expediency on that. Thank you.
And we have actually met to look at that, so it is definitely something. We know the expectation, and we love our partnership with World of Color. We, we actually had some students who graduated today with certifications that actually go to the, the daycare and get their hours there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Frank.
Yes, ma'am.
We, the dream, if I'm not mistaken, was to have that type of partnership on every side of our city, that we have at least four, that we can reach more families. Thank you for pursuing it, thank you.
Is there any other feedback for Dr. Frank?
Thank you.
Public comments, it is now time for public comments. Ms. Antoine, do we have anyone signed up to address the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Pr- uh, Ms. Antoine, I don't have my script for public comment.
I apologize, I just realized I forgot to attach it.
Let's see. You don't want me to add what it is? Not to, no, not, not tonight. Let's see. I want 2019, 2007. Do you have the script? Let's see what years this is. Uh, 2019 keeps coming up.
Would you like me to add a little bit on your behalf?
What?
Would you like me to add a little bit on your behalf?
That's not it.
Oh, okay. No, that's not it.
The portion of this meeting is set aside for parents, students, employees, and community members to address the board about any matter of interest to them pertaining to the school program. Each person who has signed up to speak before the start of the meeting will be provided two and a half minutes to speak. If you registered at the meeting, you will be provided one and a half minutes. The board will listen, but it is forbidden by the Texas Open Meetings Act from discussing any topic raised or making any decision unless the matter is already on the agenda of the meeting. We will remind you that, excuse me. We will remind you that public comment is not the time or place to bring the board complaints about a particular program or a particular employee. Should you have a complaint about a particular program or a particular employee, we will, the board president will ask you to stop and will refer you to the appropriate grievance process. This is in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy BED Local that specifically requires the board to refer such complaints to the proper resolution channels.
Ms. Antoine?
Dr. Brandon Thurston. Not here? Okay, for a minute and a half, Jennifer Moore.
I'm scared. Thank you, guys, for, thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I would like to bring before you the need for cameras in all special needs classrooms. Not being specific with complaints, there are multiple open CPS investigations, as well as BISD police criminal investigations related to an occurrence, related to my daughter. I understand that cameras are available through the process of being requested by a parent, principal, admin, or board member. After that request is made, that's 30-day approval, and then 40 to 45 days to put them in. You can only make the request at the beginning of the year or throughout the year, but it's only for that school year, and it doesn't continue through. My daughter, who's currently in a special needs classroom at Amelia, will be attending Caldwell Elementary School for ESY, and I don't know if there's cameras in that room either. There's currently not cameras in my daughter's classroom, which I have requested. My daughter's first report of abuse was starting in January. I worked with the principal to make it, and there was an investigation. Spoke with the principal on February 3rd requesting cameras in the classroom, which he assured me that he would follow through on. That request was not followed through. I made a formal request on March 20th, which was approved on April 25th, 15 days after my daughter's injury. If properly requested, maybe the incident in April would not have happened. But if the cameras were in the room in the first place, then we would know right away what happened, and there wouldn't be any question as to how that teacher could still be teaching in the room. Cameras in the room benefit BISD board. As a, it protects you, it protects BISD against false claims being made, as well as protecting all the students. Sorry for going over, and thank you for your time.
That concludes requests for public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Antoine. We are now ready for information items. Update on personnel activities, Mr. Samuel.
Good evening, board. And welcome, Ms. Avery. You have in front of you a listing of newly hired and separated employees for the month of April. I would like to give a special shout out to Yolanda Valerie, the new principal at Fale, Victoria Landry, new principal at Jones Clark, and Renee DePigas, the new principal at Smith Middle School. They are on the trail hiring for their campus. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez, welcome back.
Well, thank you. It's good to be back. So for the month of April, the tax office collected almost $600,000 in maintenance and operations taxes, and just right below $120,000 in debt service taxes, and we are 95.93% collected. Any questions? For the general fund, we had $157 million, almost 158 million, really, and expenditures of just over $146 million. So we are in the black, because, you know, our tax collections came in in February, January and February, and we had outstanding purchase orders, just over $3.6 million. Our campus activity funds collected just over $343,000 during the month of April. And then we had a number of donations, monetary donations totaled of over $11,000. Tricon donated to several campuses, $500. An anonymous donation to Odom Academy in the amount of $591. Nat Gas gave Westbrook High School $500. Architectural Alliance was a donation to Westbrook High School, $3,500 for the coaches' rings for the state basketball win. And then Ramona Dugas Lee donated $215 to Beaumont United High School. Dolores Chevis of D. Richard Real Estate donated to Corinne Tech $50. Emma Brown to Corinne Tech for $30. And Lawrence Evans to Corinne Tech for $25. And then John P. McGovern Foundation donated to Child Nutrition Department $5,000. And we had two donated items. Chick-fil-A chicken biscuits to Peach MacArthur from Bolton, CDJR, in the amount of $1,034. And Jean Leaf of Jason's Deli donated coffee to Regina Elementary for $50, and we didn't get invited. Oh, well. And then we do have a quarterly investment report for the period ended February of 2025. And at that time, we had $143,383,318.40 in our Lone Star account. And in Texpool, we had $4,620,289.20. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief? Intruder detection, district-wide intruder detection and audit report findings?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Frank. And welcome, Mrs. Avery, Board of Trustees. After the tragedy of Uvalde, our Texas Governor with TEA, along with the Texas School Safety Center, they helped incorporate what is considered to be the intruder detection audits. The TEA wanted to ensure that all of the districts across the state of Texas were fully 100% investigated, or, excuse me, audited. And so with that being said, they have run out with to be able to accomplish that task. They have somewhat completed doing so this school year. For our district, we have completed all 26 campuses, have been audited. Any of those campuses that did have deficiencies early on have undergone the corrective action plan and have been completed. So as of today, we are completed with any type of intruder detection audits for the district. Is there any questions? Are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Report on facilities, Subcommittee. I believe Mr. Dunn is making that.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam President. Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, May 6, 2025. The following members were present. President Tilly Hickman, Robert Dunn, Randall Maxwell, Sheriff Hernandez, Dr. Ron Jackson, Mark McClellan, and Brian Johnson. The following items were, were discussed. BISD Trehan Transportation Complex construction continues on schedule. The steel material needed for the building will be delivered in July, and the project continues to be on schedule for an August 2026 completion date. Smith Middle School Commons area paintings will begin on June 9, 2025. The building will be closed to students and staff from June 9 through July 18, 2025. Summer open gym will be held at Jones Clark. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School has been rebranded. It is now Dr. Martin Luther King Collegiate Academy. The signage of the inside and outside of the facility has been ordered. All areas that say middle school will be removed. That's the end of my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn.
No?
We are now ready for the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for discussion?
President Hickman, item number one, the minutes. Yes, that we delegate an amendment to Ms. Georgia Antoine.
Yes, there's a, a mission of hours that should have been included for training that needs to be corrected. We will adopt those minutes next month. With number, item one removed, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Mr. Dunn? I don't know, I didn't catch you, Mr. Segi. Mr. Dunn has moved, and Mr. Segi seconded, to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. The motion carries seven zero. We are now ready for our action items. Board members. Approved budget amendments, Dr. Frank?
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve budget amendments from the general fund, 11, and accept amendments from special revenues, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34.
Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. GF 11 is transferring funds between functions. As we wind down the end of the year, campuses are moving funds to be able to spend the rest of their budget money. And then we have title budget amendments that are moving funds between the functions as well. And then for Head Start, they are moving funds to be able to purchase a bus, and that's going to be on our purchases over 50. Are there any questions?
You look perplexed, Mr. Evans.
Look perplexed all the time.
Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Reese to approve budget amendments as presented to the board. Is there any discussion? Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve purchases over $50,000 from the general fund in the amount of $1,224,504.27 instructional materials allotment in the amount of $781,269.80 from federal funds in the amount of $482,097.50 and state grant funds in the amount of $200,500.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Reese to approve purchases over $50,000. Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. For the general fund, we are renewing Class Link at the, in the amount of $58,802.80 that's used by our technology department. CDW is the subscription renewal for our multi-factor authentication provider. That's where our, it protects our network in the amount of $123,457.47. And finally, a long time coming, middle school purchase for furniture for Vincent Marshall and Odom in the amount of $1,42,244 through Mannings. Our instructional materials, McGraw-Hill is, this is additional science curriculum for Jones Clark, Fale Price, and Smith, since we're taking back those campuses, in the amount of $202,073.70. And then Cengage Learning is for the high school math instructional materials, which is $579,196.73. And then for federal fund purchases, we have commercial kitchens. Child nutrition is replacing some outdated equipment at King in the amount of $121,060. Then there's a purchase with Satchel Pulse for virtual mentoring for teachers for monthly professional development in the amount of $99,187,050. And then Region 5, they, they are the approved provider for the Strong Foundations PLC support. This is a new grant that we just received, and that purchase will be $112,500. And then the Thomas Bus Texas is the purchase of the new bus for Beeman Head Start in the amount of $149,350. And then we have the state grant side of the Strong Foundations purchased through Region 5 in the amount of $200,500. Are there any questions?
Mr. Dunn?
Just one, on, excuse me, on the Thomas Bus Texas, where Head Start, Beeman Head Start, you said the, the safety vision cameras?
Yes, we, we have been putting cameras on our buses. When we purchased the original fleet, we did have cameras on the buses. Some of them are not working because the technology has changed, and it's not as good. And sometimes the cameras, that, you know, the buses kind of shake a lot, and sometimes the technology doesn't work. So we do want to equip every new bus purchase with that camera system.
That's a separate purchase besides the bus itself?
Well, it's a part of this purchase, so the, the cameras are going to come installed on the bus.
Gotcha. That's a, okay.
Ms. Hernandez, if I may interject, I see Ms. Little back there. For those of you that do not know, I serve on the policy council for Beeman Head Start. So I was privy to be in the last meeting of the year. And there was several things that I thought was very interesting to add to what Mr. Dunn asked. If I may ask Ms. Little to just come up and share a little something about this.
Good evening, board.
Yes, if you'll just share the rationale, or whatever you want to share about this bus purchase, because it was, it was very unique, how you will utilize this transportation.
We have on our campus two teachers that provide trans, that drive for the fleet, and have been doing it now for three or four years. So we were trying to go ahead and purchase a bus so that they would have their own bus to drive and wouldn't have to be going back and forth between fleets, and to make sure our children get home safely. I mean, it's just a safety issue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, oh, wait. Mr. Reese?
Whoops. How you doing?
We appreciate everything you do for the ones.
Thank you so much.
We'll start back reading, probably in August.
Okay. We'll be looking for you.
I know you hold me to it.
Yes, I do.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Anybody else?
And, and just to point out, that's a really good point, Ms. Spooner, about that. Once a purchase is made through federal funds, that bus is only used for that program. The, the transportation department can't take it and use it for other things. It's for that program.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spooner. All in favor, raise your right hand, signaling aye. Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve rankings and contract award for the Chiller Replacement Project, CSP twenty-five point fifteen.
Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Segi. Miss, by Mr. Reese. To approve rankings and contract award for Chiller Replacement Project, CSP twenty-five point one five.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. We issued a CSP for the Chiller Replacement at Beaumont United, and we received back two responses. And the award is going to Associated Mechanicals for this replacement in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and three dollars. The amounts have gone up since all the tariffs have been put in place, though.
Is there any discussion? Eric Dunn? Those in favor, please signify with right hand. Those opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve rankings and contract award for Student Athletic Insurance, RFP twenty-five point one nine.
Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Segi to approve rankings and contract award for Student Athletic Insurance, RFP twenty-five point one nine. Is there any discuss, are you going to talk to us?
I'll talk to you. So this is Student Athletic Insurance. This is the first year that we're awarding a new contract to Greater East Texas Insurance Associates for our Student Athletic Insurance. And just to remind the board, this is student insurance for parents. It pays secondary to their insurance that they have. If their student is injured during any athletic event, they can file on this insurance, and it could pick up like a copay or something like that. So this is a little bit less than we've paid in the past. We, I think our last year, we paid a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And so we did an RFP, and the amount is one hundred and two thousand, two thirteen.
Is there any discussion?
Question, what if the parent doesn't have insurance at all?
It will pay up to the amounts allowed in the program.
Okay, thank you.
There are limits as to what it pays, but it does pay things.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, raise your right hand, signaling aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve rankings and contract award for Health Insurance, RFP twenty-five point one eight.
So move.
Mr. Dunn? Mr. Evans? It has been moved and seconded by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Evans to approve rankings and contract award for Health Insurance, RFP twenty-five point one eight.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. We issued an RFP for our Employee Health Insurance. And at this time, I would like to recognize, because we formed an Employee Benefits Insurance Committee at the direction of Tracy Reinhold, our Director of Risk Management and Benefits. And if you're on the Employee Benefits Insurance Committee, could you please stand and be recognized? They were presented with a lot of information this year. There were several meetings that were held, and we actually had Gallagher, our insurance consultants, come and present to them so that they could better understand the things that districts are facing, the things that programs are facing, the things that insurance companies provide. And we do have with us Ben Magnussen and Betty Gwynn with Gallagher. And if y'all would like to come up, in your packet, there's some information that they're going to share, and you can follow along with it. It's the second page after the scorecard. And they're going to kind of talk about the things that we're kind of going through with our health insurance. This is Ben, and this is Betty.
I know, I know, okay, sure, no problem. That's all right, that's all right. Good evening, thank you for having us. This has been a really fun project. The more challenging these types of projects are, the more we love working on them. And as you know, healthcare costs are going up every single year without exception. So throughout this process, like we talked about, we went through the committee and brought to them everything from benchmarking, comparing it to the TRS plan, comparing it to all of the districts that are adjacent to you as well. Because it's always so important that your benefit package be competitive, affordable, and provide high-quality, cost-effective care to your employees and their family members. That is always our goal, to bring these programs to your employee population. So what we were faced with when we were talking and working through this plan is we had a very compressed timeline, and that's why we worked through the RFP, because we wanted to leverage the market. We knew how the plan was running, and we knew what to expect from Blue Cross for the renewal. And the only way that we could leverage that renewal was by doing a formal RFP. Because otherwise, we would simply just be accepting Blue Cross's renewal as they presented it. Whereas when we have a competitive marketplace, that's what's going to help us leverage the market to get the best rate and renewal that we possibly could. So what we did is we went to the marketplace. Oh, you want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so as Betty was saying, for RFP twenty-five eighteen, we went out to the market. We received proposals from three medical vendors, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Curative, and United Healthcare. And then when we flip to the next page, this is where you'll find the financial executive summary. So you'll see in column two, the current annual medical spend is about twelve point six million dollars. In the initial RFP, Blue Cross Blue Shield came in with a proposal that was thirty-four point eight percent above your current annual spend, or about thirty-four point eight percent above your current premium rates. During best and final offer, when we went back and told them to sharpen their pencil, they came back at that nineteen point nine percent that you'll see in this blue box right here. In addition to the nineteen point nine percent rates that they're offering, they're also providing a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar administrative credit that will be applied to the first or second month's invoice. So when we factor in that three hundred and ninety thousand dollar administration credit, it brings the renewal down to that sixteen point nine percent that's in that blue box. When we flip to the next page, you'll see that Beaumont ISD is currently offering three health plans, and it is recommendation that that continue for the next plan year with no plan design changes. On the next page, you will see that, you'll see the current breakdown for the current year premiums for each three plans, PPO Plan, the HMO Plan, and the High Deductible Health Plan. And then you'll see in the right three columns, the new premium rates for all three plans and for all three health tiers. That's the employee-only, employee spouse, employee plus child, and then the employee plus family tiers. And then you'll see on the next page, a further breakdown of what those contributions will be for the employees. So for example, when we look at the HMO Plan for the employee-only tier, it's currently zero dollar employee contribution. You'll see on the right-hand side in the blue box under the employee difference column that that is increasing to forty-two dollars and ten cents a month. When we look at the High Deductible Health Plan for the employee-only tier, that is going from thirty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents up to ninety-six dollars and sixty cents, or a difference of sixty-one dollars and one cent. And then lastly, on the PPO Plan for the employee-only tier, it's going from thirty dollars and sixty-three cents up to that one forty-five, for a difference of a hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So basically, what it means is there's not going to be a plan that our employees can take, that it will be no cost to them. There's going to be a cost with every plan, depending on what plan they take.
No, no, you're good. Are there any questions?
Ms. Hernandez, could you tell us what groups were included in your employee committee?
We had a representative from every campus. There were criteria that we wanted, they want, we wanted them to be a participant in the health insurance, to be on the committee. There was a representative from every department, and the heads of the presidents of the teachers organizations. And then, of course, Tracy is a member, and then Derwin, and myself, and Brandon Basinger.
Thank you. So you've covered the waterfront as far as getting input from every group within the district?
Correct. And not only did they do the health insurance, they did our ancillary benefits that we offer too. And they voted on which ones, if they wanted to add any new ones this time as well.
Just one quick question, you went through that kind of quickly. On the page where you have the contributions, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six plan year contributions, as you go across there, these, how much is actually the employee is paying on these numbers here? I see four hundred and forty-six for twenty twenty, what year is that? Yeah, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which is current, that's what?
So it's broken down into, the EE is the employee contribution, how much, that's how much the employee pays. The ER is how much the district pays. And then you add those two together, and it gives you the total premium.
Total premium, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and that's monthly forty-two?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so they just pick which plan they want? Okay. Oh, I'm good, I'm sorry.
Anybody else have a question?
What is an average three percent raise going to be?
When you say an average, are you saying to each individual?
Pull something out of the air. Well, because what I really want to know is...
Is it going to cover the health insurance increase?
Is the health insurance going to eat any raise we give them?
Not for everyone, no, ma'am, it will not cover it for everyone. And a lot of times, if there's going to have to be something out of the pocket, typically, there's some of our people that will not take the health insurance. There is an ancillary benefit, though, that we're adding this year. The, what's it called? East Tech's Curate?
Look, they don't take it, we don't give them any.
And it's going to be like, they can, you pay so much per month for employee, and they can go to an urgent care. Like if they can't afford having that insurance, there's going to be an avenue where they can go see a doctor for, I think it's twenty-five dollars a month? Is it twenty, sixty dollars a month to go to the urgent care? And they, but they can do family coverage. Tracy, come up here, please. This is Tracy Reinhold. She's our Director of Benefits, and she's been working with our, we have different third-party administrators and consultants to help us through this process. And she's been very instrumental in trying to get other avenues for employees. The East Tech Curate Program allows for employees to voluntarily purchase the ability to be seen at East Tech's urgent care. They're calling the program East Tech's Curate. So for sixty dollars a month, an employee can select care for themselves. And then it's employee plus one, employee plus two, and then employee family. And the rates go from sixty dollars to a hundred and forty dollars, if memory serves. It might be a hundred and forty-five dollars per month.
But we're not underwriting that.
We are not, the district is not. That is a voluntary benefit, employees can elect on their own if they so desire. But we did try to, because we wanted to see if there was a way that the district could contribute. Depending on what our health insurance came back, we were going to try to see if we could subsidize it in a way. But when it's that much money, there's really no way that we could increase our contribution past that four hundred and sixty dollars. Because to add that for employees, it would be a big impact on our budget when we're already trying to reduce expenditures to balance.
A quick question, if the employee has his own insurance, we don't subsidize them with anything?
No, we do not. If they choose, if, like if they're on their spouse's insurance and they're not, they don't have to take it, or theirs is better through their spouse, we don't subsidize them in any way, no.
Okay, I just wanted to see if it changed from when I was teaching, when I had my own insurance, and you didn't give me anything.
It has not changed.
I'm just kidding, I understand.
Any other questions?
If not, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Are you vote? The motion carries six zero with one abstaining.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve the district contribution for health insurance and other district-paid benefits for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Those in, is there anything else you're going to add?
Well, in addition to the four sixty that we contribute for health insurance, we also spend a dollar thirty-four per employee per month for basic term life, and then also a dollar eleven per employee per month for the EAP, the Employee Assistance Program. And we do have participation in that.
How much for the life? You say you pay that amount for the life?
The life? Is it ten? Ten?
It's ten thousand.
Okay, thank you.
It's term while you're here. You cannot take it with you.
The whole time you're here.
Is there any other discussion? Eric Dunn, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve the contract award for Fire Alarm System Replacement Project, CSP twenty-five point two zero.
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunn and seconded by Mr. Evans to approve the contract award for Fire Alarm System Replacement Project, RFP twenty-five point twenty.
We actually only received one response to our CSP, and it was from Texas Fire in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five ninety-five.
Ms. Spooner?
Yes, Ms. Hernandez. And seeing that we only received one response, and looking at the intro to this proposal, let's see, the offerer agrees to strictly abide by the terms, conditions, and specifications. Am I missing something? Because I didn't see any terms, conditions, or specifications.
That was in the CSP. It's outlined when they bid on it, they have to agree to our terms and conditions that are in there. There's, it's...
There's, it's, it's a part of the, the document, when they're bidding on it, and when we put in there certain stipulations and specifications, they have to abide by it. And this is them signing that they are agreeing to our terms. They're our terms, yes.
Yes, I saw that, I was aware of that. But we didn't have anything in our packet that reflects what they are abiding by.
Yes, we don't, we don't usually give that, because it's a part of the bid document. Typically, what we put in here are to approve the rankings of how it was scored, but since we only had one, we had to have some kind of documentation to put in here. And so this was their agreeing to, in their bid packet, that they would abide by our terms and conditions. But they are listed on our website if you want to go see them, and we, or we can send them to you if you'd like.
Well, I'd like to put that in my booklet, because since we only had one response, and we don't have any follow-up information, even though you're saying I could go to the website.
The terms and conditions apply to every contract that you're approving. Like tonight, the HVAC chiller repair that you've already approved, they had terms and conditions the same as this one does. We just don't put it in as part of the document, because it's not like you're, you're having to approve it, because they're agreeing to what we're asking them to.
Just FYI, has this happened before, that we've only received, I couldn't recall, just one on replacing this?
Yes.
Because normally, it's not like that. We get a few more bids.
We had one last month, where it was on a chiller replacement, we had only one response. Sometimes we do, in fire alarms, there's not a lot of companies in this area. A lot of them will come through Houston, and typically, Texas Fire is basically it. I know that Mr. DeValt has tried to reach out to other vendors, because we want that competition, and we want to be able to do business with other vendors.
Okay, thank you. Just for my information, I was looking for the terms, conditions, and specifications, and I didn't see anything.
We will give them to you, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All those in favor, raise your hand, signify you.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven, zero. It is now time to reorganize the Board of Texas, the Board of Beaumont ISD, based on Texas law, that we must reconfigure the, or at least reorganize the, the Board of Trustees after an election. Is there a motion to elect the Board President?
I have motion.
Ms. Spooner?
I move that we elect our new president for the board.
All right, Ms. Spooner has nominated herself, are there...
Oh, no, I did not.
What did you say?
There's, let me, board members...
Okay, Ms. Spooner?
Okay, I can nominate.
You can nominate whomever you like.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman, oh my God. Okay, I proudly nominate trustee Joe Evans for president of our board, for the reorganization.
Are there any other nominees?
Uh, me?
What, I'm sorry?
I move to nominate Mr. Segi as Board President.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we will take them in the order they were nominated. Those in favor of Joe Evans, please raise your right hand. Motion fails. Three to four. Those in favor of Mr. Segi? We need to vote one way or the other. Mr. Segi will be president, four to three. Is there a motion for the Vice President?
I nominate trust, Madam President, for Vice President, as ex officio, we need that, Ms. Tilly Hickman.
Mr. Reese, did you have a nominee? Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll do the same thing, those in favor of Tilly Hickman, signify by raising your right hand. Motion fails, three, four. Those in favor of Mr. Dunn, signify by the same sign. Motion carries four, three. Mr. Dunn will be the Vice President. Is there a motion to elect the Secretary?
Well, now it's my turn. I nominate myself to continue as Secretary to this board.
Mr. Segi? Is there any, another nomination? Hearing none. Those in favor of Ms. Spooner? Motion fails, three, four. Those in favor of Mr. Reese? Motion carries four, three. The new officers of BISD Board will be Mr. Segi President, Mr. Dunn Vice President, and Mr. Reese Secretary. I believe we are done. Mr. Evans, do you have comments for the evening?
No ma'am, no comment.
Mr. Dunn?
As always, I want to thank the staff for the hard work that you guys put in. We're getting toward the end of the year, and really appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Ms. Avery?
I have much to learn, I'm ready to learn, and I'm ready to work, and thank you for welcoming me tonight, and let's go.
Sounds good. Mr. Segi?
Congratulate Ms. Avery for actually running to be on this board, we got a lot of work to do. I want to congratulate Ms. Hickman for all the work that she's done over the last couple of years. I hope that I can fill your shoes, as well as also want to congratulate Ms. Spooner for the work that she has put in as a secretary. And I want to congratulate everybody on administrative staff for the hard work that you do, especially Ms. Frank in Dr. Allen's absence. I don't want you all to think that I threw you under the bus in reference to raising the bar. I know that we can raise the bar and get the scores up, and get more schools in the A and B category, as well as get the reading comprehension and the math scores up. I know you have it in you to do that, as leaders in the district. I know what we do every day is hard. I know that. But I know that you have the ability to do it. So we're going to be pushing you a little harder. I ask that you do that. Work just a little bit harder, so we can raise the standards here in BISD for all the other districts to follow us. Thank you.
Mr. Reese?
President. What Tilly has done, and maybe a lot of you don't know her background, this lady has done, she's been around the world in a school district, teaching young people. She loved it, she loved it, she loved it. And when I had the opportunity, and I was the fourth vote, she's been president, and she has done a heck of a job. And we have some upcoming people that I can see here, I'm not going to call Joe's name, I, I mean, and I'm calling the new lady here. They are young warriors. I'm old school, and everybody, I think should have an opportunity to want to do it. I've been president before, many years. I don't know how many, but a lot of them. Because during that spat, under my leadership, with the board, we put a ele, brand-new elementary school in every part of Beaumont, north, south, east, and west. I don't have to call the names, you can see them. Sally Curtis was one of the last one, which they weren't too happy because of some other things we did before that, but it didn't matter. When I had an idea to do, and the board backed it, we put in a brand-new elementary school in that area, along with Regina Howell. No school district around here can say they accomplished that. That's what I am as an accomplishment. So I just wanted to let the public know, we did it for you, and now we have a new board, and, and thank you for you coming out on the vote. Thank you.
Ms. Spooner?
Yes, thank you, President Hickman. Oh, wow. Reorganizing is always, a reorganization is always something. And keep in mind, that even though we are individual trustees, we have one goal in mind, is to make sure that this district is the district that we know it is presently, and what it can be. And I'd like to just say, I'm looking around, this is my third term, third four-year term on the board, and I've been Vice President and Secretary. And I have thoroughly enjoyed, this sounds like a goodbye speech, it's not. It sounds like a goodbye speech. But I am so excited to work with our new officers and the rest of the board, because anyone that knows me, first of all, I love God, and he's in control of everything. You know, we may not have been happy with the way, you know, the voting turned out for President of the United States, some were happy, some were not. But we still have to work with who God has put in charge. And so in saying that, President Hickman, you've done an awesome job, Stacy did an awesome job, I want to welcome Ms. Avery. I know her outside of this realm, and we have worked together, so this is not my first rodeo with Ms. Avery. And so I would just like to thank all of my fellow colleagues on this board for the time I've served in office with you. And like Avery said, I'm ready to work, it doesn't stop. Sometimes they call me unstoppable. So I'll leave with that, thank you, Tilly.
Thank you. Dr. Frank?
Just want to thank everyone for spending my birthday with me. And just a reminder to staff, we have 10 days. We can do great things in 10 days, and we will, okay? Great instruction, making sure our students are focused and still learning, because we're reaching for those high targets that we're changing again.
Thank you, Dr. Frank. I want to say thank you all, with an especial appreciation of our 48 students who earned their associate's degree before they got their high school diploma. It's pretty amazing that we offered them that. Thank you to the staff, particularly the cabinet, for pitching in and pulling together and making everything work with Dr. Allen's absence. Thank you, Dr. Frank, for being at the head of the ship. Welcome, Ms. Avery, congratulations to the new officers, and have a great evening.
Is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. No big deal. We have got...